I'll call the June 28, 2018 Town of Northwood Planning Board Meeting to order at 6:30. Present, select persons representative, Beth Boudreau, Joe McCaffrey, Hal Kreider, Betty Smith, Chair Bob Strobel, town staff, voting designation, all members present. I'm assuming Mr. Kreider is coming back. We have minutes of May 24 to approve. And I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
So?
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. McCaffrey. Did we approve changes except for page six?
Yeah.
It was just page six?
It was just page six, so we just need to cover page six tonight. I don't remember that being the case, but I wanted to double check. So we just need to do for May 24, we just need to do page six. And then on line 32, there's an extra T in it. And there is not a... Any... Okay. That makes more sense. So change the T to a Y.
What was, Bob, did you recall?
Permission?
What was the issue with page six?
It was missing.
It was missing.
It was just missing altogether.
It was just missing altogether.
Thank you, Gary.
I know Lee's not going to be here, if you want to shift ones around, but I guess, no, I guess we're good. Okay. Anything else on page six? Okay. I might... Any further discussion on the May 24 minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes, I'm assuming, as amended per the motion, the second?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay. Five, zero, zero. Okay, and we have minutes of June 14 to cover from last time. And I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. Kreider. Discussion on minutes of June 14. And just open it up for any pages. As long as you use line numbers. Going once, going twice. There are times...
Can I just add on page four, line 25? Send out a request to town departments and the schools, so we know what it was, who we sent it to.
And school board?
Yes.
Okay. I'd agree with that. Not that it's just my decision, solely my decision, but it's good clarification. Anything else? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes as amended of June 14, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining.
Abstaining.
I'm assuming due to absence, which is fine. Before, zero, one. Mr. McCaffrey. Okay. We are on to tonight. Three minutes to go for minutes, that's pretty good.
Yes.
Record. So we have case 18-05. We have...
It's Camp Yavna.
Yes, Camp Yavna. Sorry. I was looking for Mr. Tisignet, but he is not here. But we will call that... And we have not opened this, correct? This is not a continuation?
Correct.
Correct. Just want to make sure. Okay. So we need to find for completeness.
Mr. Bassett is in the office, in a room representing now.
Okay. You're welcome to come to the table, please, if you'd like. But before we get going on this, I'd entertain a motion for...
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think it makes a little bit of sense to have the applicant give a short overview of what they're asking for and what they've submitted.
Before opening?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's not uncommon, and I think it would help at least frame what the board has in terms of materials right now, so you can talk about whether or not it's complete.
Good point. Good way to do it. Okay. Why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Russell Bassett, and I am the facilities manager at Camp Yavna.
Okay. And for, I guess more for the members of the public than the board, but the board will... Why don't you give us an overview?
Okay. We've been doing many projects throughout the years. Unfortunately, I don't know the reason exactly why, but our site plans have not been kept up to date. We have all building permits, inspections by the building inspector, inspections by the fire department, but for some reason, our site plans are not kept up to date for projects that we've done in previous years and this past year. So we've brought all of our plans since the last official site plan. We've put all the projects that we've done through the years on here. Everyone is listed as proposed, but they are actually already completed. And we have building permits with occupancy permits for each project that has been done. All projects have met state and local building codes. We do have two public water systems on the property, both of which are inspected monthly. We have to supply monthly water tests to the state of New Hampshire. This year, the fire department came through and did a complete inspection of all our buildings. We also have a DES does an annual inspection of our camp also. So we've just added all our projects onto this one plan. So I know it seems complicated, but we're really just trying to bring the plan up to date, and we want to move forward from here, from now on. We'll do a site plan every time. I've only been involved as facilities manager, this is my second year. So I've got some catching up to do, and I just want to keep up to date with everything, with all the codes and everything. So please ask any questions you want. On the plan, it states proposed, those are all the additions that we've done. I also brought with me tonight the engineered stamp plan that you guys requested. And I also have for every member, if they request, a occupancy of each building.
We got that last time. Thank you.
I was just going to say, are the drawings the same as what we got last time, too? Or were there revisions?
This is the same drawing that you received, this is just a stamped copy, because the other ones were not stamped.
Got it. That sounds good. Okay, that sounds good. So just to... I heard you say it twice, but I want a third time to chart. On the plan, when we read proposed, that means that project has been completed?
Yes.
No, no future things, nothing that has been...
Nothing, nothing future listed on the plan. It's all proposed, but it has all... That's how we were asked to put it on the plan.
Just wanted to double check.
That's fine.
Are any of these still ongoing right now?
No.
They've all been completed?
All been completed and inspected with certificates of offer.
Okay.
Okay. That was a magic, ex-magic word I was looking for.
Just to clarify that, the last point, why was it suggested that the completed items be listed or indicated as proposed?
Because they're changes from the previous last site plan that the Town of Northwood has.
So this is kind of acting or representing as though it is picking up for the last one and...
Right. From everything from, changes from the last site plan to date are listed as proposed. And the last site plan, I was told, the Town of Northwood had was 2006.
I believe that as a way of moving back in time for proposals.
Yeah, I'm only, just slightly...
I mean, I...
Is there, only because this is being registered now as a document that will go into our files, is there any other indication on here that these proposed items are also completed items, as you just...
No, not noted on the plan.
I'm just, it's just a matter of clarity to me. I'm thinking, I understand the intent, and it's a perfectly good idea, but it's just that as a document going in now, and one of this, it's saying in 2018, these are proposed items. If there was a notation or something equivalent, saying...
Well, there's...
Post as of.
We will have access to the minutes from this meeting, and we've just put on the record that these have been completed. So I don't think there will be any confusion with that regard, or at least anything that we can't clear up easily.
To us, maybe, but though I'm a little bit confused. The, to anybody else looking at it, that could represent a...
If you don't have the plan itself, you could write a little note, you know?
If I could just add a comma...
An asterisk. It could be an asterisk, and at the bottom of the page, it says, "previously proposed", proposed, maybe even the date, but not necessarily. "The previously proposed, now completed." Some phrasing that would indicate the transition it took, that's all I'm...
Typically, a new, a new plan would come in with, if there had been existing structures, they always come in with what's proposed.
I'm good with that, but this isn't...
I don't, there's building permits on record that show that. I don't think that by virtue of, if you just look at the role of the planning board, if you approve this plan, then it'll look like every other plan that's approved by the planning board, with what's existing and what was proposed to the planning board for acceptance and approval.
So Steph just didn't want to overly complicate the way, the way the plan looked?
I understand the consistency you're indicating you want to achieve because of the other sequence of plans that came before, sort of before some other board in the past. It's just that, in this case, this one's current, and we're catching up, which is all good. But since these are done, as we're getting this, this wasn't in the file last year, so it'll be in the file now. I mean, this isn't being given to us in 2010. This isn't being given to, oh, whenever this, whenever the last one expired, and this one now is picking up. So I'm just...
It was an oversight, and it was an oversight and all...
I'm good with that, and I think we're doing...
But I don't believe it was really an oversight necessarily on the part of Camp Yavna. I think when it was brought to their attention, they came in and they provided things in a very timely manner, so...
I'm good, I think there's all good intentions here, I'm just trying to, I just think in terms of a document. Maybe we could put a letter in the file, because I agree with Linda.
Well, we have the minutes.
Yeah, well, if that's the case. Linda, if they have the occupancy permits as they were issued in the minutes, then it's, then it's pretty reflective.
Because that's the, that's the next, if you're looking for a, I use the term chain of custody, which is not wrong, but chain of process, you're looking at what's proposed, and then the next step is to look for the building permit and the CO.
I'm just, I'm just reflect, I think there should be some reflection that this is, the document has a certain unusual quality in that it's catching up.
Sure.
We're all good with, and thank, everybody's good with that, and it is, it's a good faith effort on the part of the camp, it's good, whatever the reason was, things weren't caught up, and there's could be dozens. It's just that maybe this should have, this...
Well, let's...
Well, you brought it up now again, Joe, I think, you know, it's going to be in two sets of minutes at least.
Well, so...
So from the...
You know, and the whole... Maybe you could write it on the stamped copy that I just gave you, was to make a notation on that one, because that's the...
I'm not talking about anything complicated, I think something is simple to reflect that this was a updated document.
It could be a potential condition later.
That's what I was just thinking, but...
Ten or 20 years from now, nobody...
We can circle back to this, because we haven't opened the case yet.
What?
We haven't opened the case yet.
No, but we're discussing this in the beginning, so...
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I think the, what the board should be thinking about, unless there are any other factual questions right now, is whether you have enough information to open this and go forward.
I would entertain a motion to find complete.
Find complete.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
So a motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. B. Smith. Discussion on completeness. Hearing none. All those in favor of opening case, finding case 18-05, Camp Yavna, as complete, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, those abstaining. And for the record, Mr. Justin Mikuleski has joined us at 7:40 and is added to the voting designation. 6:40, sorry, not 7:40.
Yeah.
It feels like 7:40.
Yeah.
So we have opened 18-05, that starts the 65-day clock. Just for explanation, the, under whatever RSA is, we have 65 days to make a decision based on the information granted, unless the applicant requests a continuance or an extension. I don't think that's, we're going to run into the clock time tonight, but just to double check. As long as you like to make sure people are aware of that. I will read the butters list. If you are present in the room, please both raise your hand and say something so that I know you're here, as I read your name. William Van Asperen, Daniel Ferguson, and I apologize if I mess up, mispronounce your name, please correct me. Aaron Berube, Josephine Crookshank, Wayne Fortin...
Jay Fortin.
Fish and Game of New Hampshire, George Powder, Raymond Amazin, John Frost, Reynolds Lampoon, Robertson Irrevocable Trust, Old Mountain Road Trust, Town of Northwood, Peter Lebell, J. Lee Baldwin. Are, Ms. Baldwin? Yes, that's who it would be. Okay. Okay, thank you. Both the butters and members of the public will be given a chance in a little bit to speak on this application if they'd like. Questions from the board?
Before we open the public hearing, I do want to point out that the applicant indicated on the checklist that they were requesting a waiver to the section requiring identification of all utilities on the site plan. And I noted in the staff report that we had not, at that time, received that written request. The applicant has submitted a request in writing electronically officially for that waiver, including the justification. Did you all receive copies of it, or would you like me to just read it into the record quickly?
I did not see it.
I did not see it.
Okay. So I'll read it into the record. It says, "I am requesting a waiver to exclude all utilities, as there are many, and it would make the plan very busy. Also, the plan is very large, with several different types of utilities, some private, some owned by Eversource, many leach fields, and two separate water systems. All of these systems are state-approved. Water systems are tested once a month through DES. Thank you for your understanding, Russell Bassett."
Thank you. So that is a decision we need to make on granting or not the waivers requested. I'm just reading through the items to be addressed on the 614-18. I think at this point in time, I'll open the public hearing, and... I'm going to get my notes out here.
And then cover the waivers after?
Yes. I'd rather have, give the public and the butters a chance to speak before we make decisions. Ms. Fortin, would you like to speak tonight? You don't have to, but you are in a butter, and I like to have butters that go first, if you would like to speak.
I just have a question. Does that...
You're going to have to use a mic, I'm sorry. Gary trumps me in that respect.
Does the site plan that was submitted tonight, does it show any new buildings that will be going in?
No.
Are there plans for any other new buildings going in?
Not according to the applicant.
Not at this time?
Not at this time. They would, and I believe he's already stated that he would come back to the planning board for any new buildings.
Any, any other new buildings? And so if any other new buildings go in, we would receive notice?
Yes.
It was the new building that went up, now we did not receive notice? The one that's along the waterfront?
That's why this plan has been submitted. It was not our intention to not let you people know, or was not required of us at the time to submit a site plan when we started the project.
I understand that.
So because that did not happen, we did not notify about this. In the future, we have to submit a site plan, and then all about...
Under construction, that's completed, as he said, or everything's been completed.
Right. Because in the past, we always received notice of, of new buildings. Butters received a notice. This time, we did not. So at this time...
It was a mistake by several parties, I guess we could say.
It seems fair to say that, but...
So if there is a new building, then the procedures will be followed as they have been in the past?
Correct.
I think it's a combination of the applicant knowing what the rules are, the town knowing what the applicant is supposed to do.
Right. I think we've had several different building inspectors through the time here, some part-time, some full-time.
Exactly. So then I think now that we have provided this application as approved, now we have a snapshot of what Camp Yavna should look like, what has been approved, what has been completed, and according to the applicant, you know, any additions to it will generate a site plan request, and we'll receive notice, or we might risk a cease and desist letter.
Correct.
With the only a butter, unless Ms. McGowan wants to speak, given an opportunity, I'll open the hearing to public comments at this point in time. All that I ask is, first of all, that you use the microphone, and then state your name There is no requirement to speak, you can ask questions, whatever you'd like, as long as it's about this case. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment section at this time, and if need be, it can be reopened. Moving on to questions from the board, before we deal with waivers. Anything about the application in general? None.
Well, I'll just, let me just, Russ, just to have you restate it, right now, there's no, no further intention to build anything or future projects in the works.
Okay.
We, I think, and this was discussed a while back, there was the thought that if there were, that you would incorporate these even in this, just to give yourself a, I don't know, further expedite things, just going forward, if you had some in the works, but it turns out that you don't, I guess, for the time being.
For the time being, we do not, correct?
Yeah. Okay.
Any future ones will require a whole new application process through you folks, new design, new site plan, all that.
Okay, thanks.
Notice, I think that was the main point. Okay. Ready to move to waivers? Okay. The applicant has requested a waiver to not show all of the utilities on the plan.
Is there any other reason not stated? You mentioned already, James, one of the...
Make the plan very busy.
Yeah.
And from the, we don't have an existing site plan showing the utilities, correct? Well, it would probably, it would be out of date anyway.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Question, Bob?
Sure.
What types of utilities are they?
Water, I believe septic was already shown.
Well, the wells...
Water and...
Electric.
Electric.
Gas, propane.
Okay, so when we say like utilities, does that mean, for example, the well shed is here, well is here, are they, are the utility drawings typically include the piping diagrams and everything like that, too?
That's what I assumed when you said utilities, but maybe I'm...
Because generally, it'll show the well, power poles, transformers, if need be, if they're on-site.
Because I mean, some of the stuff is shown, I mean, the leach fields are shown, the wells are shown, the interconnecting piping.
I think that's, that's where the busy line, or the busyness comes from, is, is, would be the telephone poles, the electric lines, and the plumbing, or the piping. The, what could be done for future applications would be to, well, they would be subject to that same regulation unless they waived it, would be to show in detail if the applicant comes back with a proposal for, I'm pulling numbers and future predicting, so I'm just, this is all, not an application, you know, three buildings to be put in, you know, those details we can include, then where the propane's going to be, where's the, where the water line that comes in, those kinds of things, and they would also have a locust map to show where within the site plan that would go. So we could, as buildings go up, we should have, we can have details added for utilities as not of, on the overall site plan.
Sure. The value would come at that point, as you're describing, if a building or a series of buildings were to disrupt or interfere with a power line layout or something like that, and that would be something that clearly would be whoever, New Hampshire Co-op or wherever services would be involved in, but that would be something we would look at or want to know, but not relevant to this, as they already...
I mean, looking at, if I remember, some of you were here for the, wasn't the dining hall, maybe the community building, was the, or the art center you had a, what was the application a couple of years, good many years ago?
Well, the art center was a big one.
For what? For Camp Yavna. We had a new building for that.
Dining hall? No, not dining hall, I'm sorry, the amphitheater, or the theater?
Crescent-shaped, or not, sort of crescent-shaped.
Well, I'm calling it an amphitheater. Well, I'm calling it an amphitheater.
That was the amphitheater?
Yep.
The scale of that drawing was that the building itself took up half a page of this, and the detail is there. If we tried to fit that level of detail on overall, you're just gonna see little dots, and it's not gonna help any. My opinion of that. So I, in this case, I'm in favor of granting the waiver, but that's just myself.
Motion to grant the waiver.
Okay, second?
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so motion by Ms. D. Smith, second, but by Mr. McCaffrey? Okay. Discussion on granting the waiver. Hearing none, all those in favor of granting the waiver for section Roman seven A five J, requiring all utilities on the site plan, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. Okay, so you have your waiver, spit it out yet?
Do I see just one other one?
Pardon me?
Do I see just one other waiver requesting?
The applicant identified another waiver to section Roman nine subsection L regarding special flood hazard areas. It was staff's opinion, looking at the plan and at the application, that a waiver for that section isn't necessary.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That was nine L or?
Yes, that was staff item.
So that's item number five under items to be addressed.
Okay. And we dealt with item number three, we received a copy of the shoreline permit. As far as number one, item one goes, site capacity, you think you gave a listing of capacity of the building in shower and things of that.
The premises, yes.
So that should-
As far as item two, the seasonal use, basically, we're only open from May to October. We don't have heat in any of our buildings except for one. Our water mains are all above ground, our water piping on our buildings is exposed in ninety-nine percent of the cases, so we have no intention at this time to do year-round use of the facility.
Want to come up with a couple thousand tons of fill and bury? Is that an adequate range of timeframe for?
Yeah, staff didn't have a particular concern about the period of use, we just wanted to confirm on the record to make sure that we all have the same understanding.
Just double check it. Sounds good, okay. And we have a license engineering stamp.
We do.
Plan, okay. Anybody have anything else?
So, well, number one, where is the staffing, or excuse me, the-
The site capacity aspect?
Where is that documented?
Right here.
So that's part of the applicant?
Yeah, that's part of the application.
Okay, so we have a doc, no, I have that.
Okay.
So that, by coming in with the application, documents what capacity we're approving?
Maximum capacity for each building or each?
Correct, that, my understanding is that the capacity numbers for each bunk were agreed upon between the applicant and the building inspector. By including it as part of this application, it will be part of their site plan approval. So any changes to those individual building capacities, too, would be considered changes to their site plan.
Got it, okay, good. Motion to approve.
Second.
Major site plan review application, or whatever we're calling this, the updated site-
Case eighteen dash oh five, Campiavina.
Eighteen dash oh five, yeah, that's good.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, we have a small problem, I'm not seeing a signature block. Signature block.
Did it care?
That's all right, you okay with just making it wrong?
There's space on it?
Sure.
Yeah, right above the legend or the scale, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
We might want to consider getting like a block or a stamp. We had one, I thought we had one.
Years ago.
Okay. It's not with my signature on it, but just how we I can sign. Okay. I'm not gonna add that as condition. I can sign it, I'm proud, okay, anything else?
Oh, it's a vote? So I can do it?
Okay, so motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. Smith, I believe. You did it right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those abstaining, okay.
Thank you very much.
Up to date at this point, well, actually, you will be as soon as I sign it, it should be later tonight. Thank you very much. Okay.
I'm gonna recuse myself on this one. Next case, I'm accusing.
Yes. For eighteen oh six?
That's what, yeah, you're up next.
I'll call the next case dash eighteen dash oh six, Brian and Winifred Geary of one ninety-four, of Catamount Road. And for the record, the voting designation has changed, Ms. Boudreau, Mr. McCaffrey, Ms. D. Smith, Mr. Mikuliski, and Mr. Strobel are all on the voting designation. Okay, we had a chance to look at this a few weeks ago. And I can speak for myself, I've driven past it numerous times. But we do need to find for completeness. And I would entertain a motion to have that.
Motion. Second.
It is a race, it's always a race. Most by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. D. Smith. Do you find this eighteen oh six complete? Do we have anything outstanding? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining, okay, we are on the clock, I'll open case eighteen dash oh six. Nope, I think we're okay. Justin, I can share. Yeah, I think everybody has a clock. Like the last time, for case eighteen oh six, if you are in a butter, please both raise your hand and say something so that I know you're here. As I read your name, John Bishop, or sorry, Diane Bishop. Mr. Kreider?
Here.
Some people I can recognize. I did, thank you. Catherine Preve Trust. Suzanne Boziak. And again, if I mispronounce your name, you have my apologies, and please correct me. Ryan Loveling. Mr. Wormal is here. And Joseph and Jane Joyce. And would you introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Ms. Geary, and one oh seven Catamount Road, and this is a proposal from my husband Brian and myself to subdivide the lot, the main one, to two acre lot, which exists of all the current buildings on the property. And that will leave approximately, there are about five point three five or five point three eight, I think, acres remaining from our total seven plus acres. And that remaining lot, we intend to retain and hopefully build something smaller, much, much smaller than what is already existing on the building for us to reside in.
Okay.
Once we sell off the main lot.
Okay. You are?
Brian, Geary.
Okay, just wanted to double check. That's what I thought. On the video, it'll show two people, and I would be witness if I did not identify both.
This is guy in blue.
That's Mr. Wormal, all right, there's, there's two people, and more than that, there's a couple people in this building that I recognize by name, and he is one. Okay. Did we have anything from, as far as access goes, from Preve Drive? Any, no clarification?
I don't think staff has received anything official regarding the ownership of Preve Drive.
We have, we have brought-
We have.
That tonight.
Okay, do you have it with you? I think that was the, probably one of the most important aspects of-
Mm-hmm, sure, sure.
Our questions.
Sure.
It's from us.
Yeah, you've got two copies, we can have them have that.
We have only- We can make copies.
I'll let you pass them to the side.
Three copies, I have, I made five copies, but they're not on the, on the nice letterhead, they're the same, they're the same letter. If you want to pass those around, and the same text, but just not on the letterhead of the-
Thank you. Let's take a second to review that.
I also have copies of the deed that grants that right-of-way for Preve Road, if you'd like to have those.
If we could have a copy for the file.
I made you five copies.
Here's the second copy.
Can I take a look at the one?
Here's the second copy here.
Okay, I think they're in there.
Okay, you just need the one?
Well, I gave him five. He's got five. Is that what I gave him? Did I give you the right ones? Did I give you the right deeds? Because I got, I might have handed you the wrong package.
Two of the same, I mean, these are all the same?
Yeah.
These are all the same.
Yeah, but who, what's the name on the top of that? Who's the?
Foshee?
Foshee, yeah, this is, this is the original, this is the original theory for what they're doing, despite copies here. The other package of deeds I gave you was the change of title coming forward, that's why.
Okay.
May I ask a question to start things off?
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
Just for clarification, that, that road, is it Preve or Prevee?
Prevee Drive is its name.
Yep. That, that's access for a number of residences that are further away, all the way over to-
Yes, Jonas Park.
It's a right-of-way, yeah, for people, for all those who are beyond our property line, the thirty-foot right-of-way runs from one oh seven Catamount Road along the side of our property down to the end of our property line.
Okay.
And that is their, yes, that's their access.
And each one of them, I assume, or each, somehow, each of the landholdings there have right-of-way use of that same drive?
Oh, yes, every, yeah, that was the purpose originally of it, to not land lock all those people down there.
I see, there was a question, I guess it was brought up, I wasn't at the last meeting, so the is there some association or some other group agreement as to how that's maintained or?
It's, all it is is a simple right-of-way to our property. Any, whatever agreement they may have come to concerning my property, I am not privy to. But it's, the original deed just says a right-of passage and a right-of-way.
Well, I'm asking you, I don't really, really, or mostly, because it was brought up, I guess, once before. And I, as I drove on it, it's, it's like very many just private roads, it's in pretty good shape from my observation. Typical little, you know, pothole here or there, but that's, those all disappear and change with time, but it seems to be maintained.
I believe there is an association amongst those individuals who live beyond us, you know, down there, and they've obviously collectively decided how to maintain the road, because they have done so, we have not had to maintain the old-
Oh, excuse me, we have, Winky.
Oh, we did, we removed.
We put in a culvert.
That's right, we did that, yeah.
To facilitate after the original culvert.
Some dead trees that were dangerous.
Okay. Collapsed. The next door neighbor has done some grading on it to get rid of the bumps.
As far as snow removal, though, we haven't had to do any of that.
Because part of your proposal, I guess, is to at some point have a driveway into on the Preve.
That's the plan, so we then most likely would become part of that collective agreement, because we then would have to obviously share in the maintenance of that.
Uh-huh, okay.
You know, that roadway, because, because we then would be using it.
Because up to now, you've been assessing where else we have Catamount Road.
We have our own driveway entrance and exit, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Well, since somebody's chiming in, just a clarification, I see the lot, the, what will be the five acre, two oh six dash twenty-one, the five point three, it's divided, it has this one forty C, one forty B. What is?
Those are soils. Lot types.
Well, those are just the soil sections. There's a little clarification off to the side that tells you what those numbers mean? Yeah. Okay, so it is the reference to that, all right.
So for I guess town staff and or the board's pleasure, one of the things I'm considering as a condition for this would be receipt of the corrected deed granting the access. Just based on the letter from Mr. Lowen. Second to last paragraph, while we straighten it out.
Are you looking for the quitclaim deed?
No, I'm just, you, we asked for clarification for granting site access, and you gave, you gave us both the deeds.
Yes.
We're just following the last, second to last paragraph. Common sense reading of the two deeds can lead to no other conclusion than that the Gearys are the owners in fee simple absolute of the right-of-way, while we straighten this out. out with the corrective deed, I want you to know, like-
We have a corrective deed.
Oh, you have the corrective deed.
It was registered.
Okay.
And I can give you a copy of that.
Okay. Is that what, that's what we got from, did you get a copy so far?
No, this is the first one.
Okay, thank you.
I did.
Now we do. That takes care of that. Ask and you shall receive, that's why I like that. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. So, that looks like it takes care of item one, and then we have sewage disposal on the new lot, 20-1, which is not indicated.
It's, uh, it's on these plans that I've brought tonight.
Okay. That's an updated copy?
Yes.
Um, why don't you pass it on to the town? That'll work.
You'll, you'll notice right where the test pit is on lot 20-1, I now have a box around that with a dedicated to sewage disposal.
Perfect.
What is the change, excuse me, in the, uh, the new plan?
Frank, yeah, look at this part.
Indication of the test pit.
There's a box around it.
Okay. And the septic disposal in the offsets, or the setback from the edge of the wetland at 77, approximately feet. And the 75-foot well radius. Does... I know you indicated it, and it's not a, this is more of my curiosity than anything else. How do you plan on fitting the house or the driveway between the well and the septic? Or is, I'm just, like I said, I'm more curious, we don't have a requirement for showing where the thing is, but I'm-
Well, the, because if you-
Sort of type.
Coming off of preview, the plan would be to turn into a drive, and then beyond the drive would be the house, you know, and the well and the septic and everything.
So, on the-
So, you would not be driving over any of the, the well or the septic.
Right, the plant, so essentially, to the left of the septic, if I was looking at your plan tonight, the left of the septic and the right of the well?
Yes.
Okay. More just curious.
Look at the contours, it's actually higher to the left, so the house is set up higher that, so you can gravity feed the septic system. We've kind of got this all planned out already. We kind of looked at this already.
Okay, I figured you had.
Newest times.
Uh, the other thing I did was, there was a question about the wetland symbol, and I already had that in the legend, I guess you didn't see it.
No, sorry.
But I also, I also put the language right on the edge of the wetland, it says edge of wetland.
Perfect.
But I want to talk to you about that at some point, other than tonight, about whether or not I had, I had to show the area for the sewage, because it says in the regulations that I really don't have to do that. But it's okay, I don't mind doing it.
I'll have to check on that.
It says if the state requires it. State does not require it on five-acre lots.
I will take your, I'll be safe, I'll take your opinion on that. I'll probably end up taking your word on it, cause I have no reason not to say that, but I'm not going to say that officially on the record.
That's fine.
Until we at least verify.
That's fine, and that's the, I'm just, that's the reason I didn't show it.
Okay.
No other reason, except that that's what it says in the regs.
Okay. I'm sure we'll be reviewing that shortly. Good to know. The voice of experience. Okay.
I wrote those regs. With a little help. So, the driveway is, they propose, the estimated, or estimated idea of the driveway, coming off of preview would be, so, well, it would be associated with this back section where the house is going to be, but you're just saying it would be-
Beyond the wetlands, you notice this as you're coming down preview there, there's
It seems like it comes up-
Decimated wetland area.
Doesn't it say driveway right here?
The very back corner.
Yeah. This is a little higher here, isn't it?
That's where we would have the driveway.
Yeah, but it's your contour lines.
Show that on the drawing?
Doesn't it say driveway in the-
The results are 10-foot.
Yeah.
Joe, it says it right here on the top, driveway.
Oh, oh, so you're, oh, at the top.
What are your contour lines?
That's our contour.
Five foot.
Okay.
Where's the flower garden going to be? Cause I've seen, I've seen you roll one.
I'm afraid the deal just, I'm, I'm saying, you know what, I gotta lift too, so I just-
Okay. So, it looks like the plans are good. Unless anybody has any differences. Going through staff, top planner comments, as far as conditions go, so I think we can cross off 1A as a condition, cause we show the septic is shown. 1B, the wetland symbol is on there, right above the state seal, there's a wetland scientist's stamp. That leaves item number two, still, we need, which is standard boilerplate, local, state, local, and federal permits.
They have some now?
You have that?
Sorry?
He has something now.
Which list are you reading off of?
Chairman, would you consider a five-minute recess so James and I could confer?
Sure.
Of something?
Wouldn't have any problem with that. Why don't we recess until 7:35? So, we're back from recess at 7:38 on Kate's 18-06. Okay. We're all set?
Mm-hmm.
So, it looks like the only condition prior to signing the plan is the all federal, state, and local permits, so you have-
And we just received the approval from the ES for a subdivision plan.
Okay.
So, I think, based on where we would put the other permits, that looks like conditions prior to signing the plan should be all set.
Okay. We're doing really well tonight, as far as knocking all the conditions off, both this case and the last case.
So, if I can, some of the other conditions of approval that I've listed in my staff report, that staff is recommending, are a result of the fact, or the relationship with building on a classics or a private road. Staff's opinion that is that, since this is coming in as a subdivision, and they are showing preview drive on the subdivision, if you approve this conditionally, preview drive will have appeared on a plat approved by the planning board, and therefore, the applicant would not need separate permission from the Board of Selectmen under 67441 to build on preview drive. So-
True.
Because they would not be going through that review to build on a private road, we have incorporated some of the conditions that the Board of Selectmen would typically consider when granting approval under 67441, namely, the improvement of, in this case, preview drive to emergency lane standards. That is essentially ensuring basic improvements, so that if emergency services needed across this property, or access this property, they could do so safely. So, the condition number three, that we are requiring prior to issuance of a building permit, is to make sure that we either have, receive stamped plans showing that existing conditions meet those requirements, or plans for the improvement of preview drive to meet those. Condition number four, again, prior to issuance of a building permit, would be to, that the town must receive all of the necessary bonding and escrow, escrow payments that would be related to those improvements, and then we would ask, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the house, that those improvements actually be completed. I do want to point out that those improvements would also require a written permit from the Board of Selectmen just to do that work to the road. And staff would be happy to work with the applicant on that process separately.
Okay.
If I have a question or ask for this one?
Go right ahead.
I'm just, I'm thinking that the road is already established as an emergency, access to all of those homes down beyond where we're going to put an additional building in? Why then, if it is now currently, do we just have to prove that it is currently, because-
The emergency, the emergency lane standards relate to the quality of the road?
Yes.
So, we would just want to be checking to make sure that the, the condition of the road satisfies all of those requirements.
In hopes that maybe the 15 or 20 people down there that already don't have-
Right, and the, um, the extent of improvements that we will be putting on this applicant would only be to the point of access from preview drive where the driveway is. So, essentially, we're placing the responsibility on you to confirm the condition of that road up to the driveway that you intend to put in.
Okay, okay. So, go ahead.
If the people who live beyond your property on preview drive-
Yes.
Have already built the road up to emergency lane standards, you're all set. We just, you would just need a-
That's my point, yeah.
You would just need a letter from a licensed engineer saying, preview drive from 107 to the edge of your property, or the location of the driveway, does meet the emergency lane standards.
Okay. I've got an issue I need to raise, if I could.
Sure.
Was the, the butters list was read?
It was.
And if we've opened it up to the public or not?
We have not opened it up to the public, but that's what I'm about to do.
Okay. I'm just realizing that if, in fact, they own the 30-foot right-of-way, that we need to notify the butters on the other side of it, and they have not been notified.
Everybody has been notified.
They have?
Yes.
Jane and Joe Joyce, yeah? And he called up the man.
On the other side of the road?
Yes.
Yes.
They were on the butters.
Jane and Justice Joyce.
I thought-
Yep, that was in our list.
I thought-
They're on there.
Al is on the other side of the property.
Al's down here.
Oh, they're further in on preview?
Yes.
Oh, no, I don't mean those, I was thinking, I thought, Mr. Bailey.
No, that's actually-
Beyond that point as well, that was my concern, I just want to make sure everybody was notified.
After Joyce comes Bailey, and Joyce's beyond their property and ours are-
Okay, that was my, my question.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the old, really, the, the two, I don't want to call them stating points, but points of, that were just brought up in discussion, are that if the licensed engineer finds the preview drive is not up to emergency lane standards, then you would need-
Before you would issue it.
Exactly, and the, um, the bonding and any escrow payments would need to be included in that.
Okay.
So, that might be something that might cause some, well, you'd be aware of it. Put another in that. Okay. Good?
No, no, I'll wait till we get to that.
Okay, at this point, I'll open the public hearing section of this application. If you are in a butter or a member of the public, well, a butters first, if you'd like to speak on this application, please do so at this point in time. Don't hold your breath. I'll open it to members of the public who would like to speak on this application. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment section of this application, or of this hearing. Okay. So, what I'm looking at, as far as conditional, conditions for potential approval, are all necessary federal, state, and local permits, you have done most of them already.
Yeah.
I like to include it as boilerplate, because one of the local permits will be from the Board of Selectmen if you need to improve preview drive at all. That's why I'm going to put that back in.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to put condition prior to signing of plans, number two, back in, because we will still need a local permit for improvements of, possible improvements of preview drive from the Board of Selectmen. It doesn't hurt, we have most of them. What should tell me to?
Is that something that you would feel comfortable getting before plans are signed? Or would you prefer to put that before a building permit?
I believe I prefer to do that before the building permit.
Okay, let's move it down then, that's fine.
I think we'd be fine with that.
I'm, sorry, I'm answering for the board, I don't need to do that.
It's fine.
The applicant-
I figure that you're going to speak, if, you know, tell me if you are opposed.
Yeah, the applicant's good with that, so good.
We have just a little bit of experience together. Okay. So, essentially, all the permits would come under the, before the issuing of the building permit.
So, I would add a condition five, that permits from the Board of Selectmen for roadwork will be obtained.
But that's-
Well, that's-
If required.
If required.
If required, exactly.
Oh, if required, I'm happy with it.
Put a parenthetical if required under, or at the end of both that new number five and at the end of number four.
Thank you.
And this will be additive claim as a note, these conditions? That's how we've done it before.
All right, let's take a-
And these would be added as a note on the plan, so they don't get lost somewhere. Cause once the plans are signed, there should be a note on the plan, correct?
Referring to these conditions?
Agree.
Uh, under, prior to the signing of plans, I'm adding a new condition number one, that all conditions of approval, and I will put the final list in your notice of decision, since we're making some changes to these as we go, so you'll have the written list. All conditions of approval will be added as a note on the final plan.
From a draftspun perspective, I think-
You're going to give that to me in some form, so I can do it?
Yeah, you'll have them all listed out on your notice of decision.
And looking at them, I think you'll have space, if you slide your notes up just a little bit.
Thank you.
Change your-
I try, I try to make sure that if we make changes to the plans, that they're, they're aren't extensive. Unless, unless that's the-
There'll be two, two conditions that you'll have?
I'll read this whole list one more time, just so we have them all straight.
Okay.
So, we have, the prior changes we requested have been made, so we're good with that. We have received the DES subdivision permit, so we're good with that. So, prior to the signing of plans, condition one, all conditions of approval will be-
I'm going to stop you one second. Just because that'll, that'll, you'll signify the end of, or close to the decision. Do we have anything else that the board wants to bring up as far as the application goes? Okay, sorry.
All right, condition one, all conditions of approval will be noted on the final plan. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, number one, record the plat with the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds within one year of this decision.
Hold on, is that timeframe acceptable? One year?
Yes. Are you, are you telling me that this is what I'm going to put on the plan?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Number two, provide a state-approved septic design. Number three, the applicant shall submit plans prepared, signed, and stamped by an engineer licensed in the state of New Hampshire for the improvement of preview drive to meet Northwood Board of Selectment guidelines for emergency lane standards and/or-
If required.
And/or indicating that the existing conditions meet such standards. Such improvements shall be from the intersection with Catamount Road to the proposed driveway location. Number four, all necessary bonding and escrow payments related to the improvement of preview drive will be submitted to the town of Northwood if required. Number five, permits from the Board of Selectment for roadwork will be obtained if required.
The previous one, I'm sorry to interrupt, but going down to the-
Number three?
What you just read from-
Number three or number four?
Three, read three again.
The applicant shall submit plans prepared, signed, and stamped by an engineer licensed in the state of New Hampshire for the improvement of preview drive to meet the Northwood Board of Selectment guidelines for emergency lane standards and/or indicating that the existing conditions meet such standards.
Okay.
Such improvements shall be from the intersection with Catamount Road to the proposed driveway location.
What's the next one?
So, the next one, all necessary bonding and escrow payments related to the improvement of preview drive will be submitted to the town of Northwood if required.
Okay, that's stating that if the bonding is required, it'll be paid. It's not stating that if the road repair-
If such improvements are required?
Right, right, if-
Does, does that language make it better for you? If such improvements are required?
Yes, if, if, if such improvements are required, then, because first, it would be the improvements, and then, because if the improvements are required, you know.
Yep.
I agree. Thank you for bringing it up. I like to make sure that both sides are comfortable with the language that-
So, the-
And the reason these are going on the plans for the notes is that that's what the building inspector is going, going to look at, so that the, the chain of process, or the process can all be followed. I think you can fit it.
We'll change, we'll change the language for number five to match that as well then. So, permits from the Board of Selectment for roadwork will be obtained if such improvements are required. And then, finally, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, preview drive will be improved to meet emergency lane standards from the intersection with Catamount Road to the proposed driveway location if such improvements are required.
Okay. That's board, good on that?
But isn't that reiteration redundant of the previous?
It's not, because number four and number five are to get the escrow payment and the permit. Number one, under a certificate of occupancy is to actually complete the work. So, they don't have to complete the work prior to getting a building permit for the house. They can be working on the road and the house simultaneously, but before they can actually get a certificate of occupancy for the house, they would have to finish the work.
Motion to approve with conditions as stated by Mr. Burden.
Second.
Yeah, well, just, I was going to ask-
Bring up the discussion room, go ahead.
So, we're asking, starting with, prior to issuance of the building permit, conditions to be placed on the plan, and that's, this list of now-
As a note.
As a note, yep. Essentially, note number nine.
Just adding a note-
Note to be added to the plan.
Just to make sure that anybody looking at the plan knows everything that has to happen.
You did say, you know, I realize you said that. The, and we're up to five, one through five, right? It was four, we're up to five. Okay, yep. And the applicant or is?
And, Mr. Chair, I, this just made me think that I do want to quantify some, or clarify something that I said earlier, and it doesn't impact this case. But I think when we mentioned preview drive appearing on a plat, only a portion of preview drive is appearing on this plat. So, staff would not then take that interpretation to mean that because preview drive appears on this plat, that nobody on preview drive needs 67441 permission going forward, that, you know, we only have this portion here-
Correct.
-that is showing this subdivision. So, I just wanted to get that on the record, and it popped in my head, so I wanted to do it before I forgot again.
I figured that was going to be the case, but I wasn't going to mention it yet. Good for you. Okay.
I guess you could use a smaller font size over-
Yeah. Number nine or number eight?
It's, I won't say I struggle with this, but it's the way, the whole interaction of this is from, you know, handing decisions from the planning board down to the board or the, the building inspector are always interesting because he doesn't get the minutes of the notes and the decisions, and it's a lot easier to-
He does get the notice of decision.
He gets the notice of decision, but it's a lot easier to stick them on the plan itself, because then they know exactly, and you and, let's say, there's less research needed. We can roll up the plan, somebody can take a look at it. This is exactly what we did, rather than sorting through the minutes. Anyway.
My concern would not be that the building inspector wouldn't-
Yes.
-read the minutes or the notice of decision, but it could be if it was four years from now or seven years from now, it could be a different building inspector who didn't read or be aware of this.
Right.
It's the timing of building at a later time that's a concern.
On my history of the board, there have been a few, but more than I like, times where there have been, let's say, things that came up after plans were signed, so.
Motion to approve case 18-07.
Motion's already been made.
It's probably been made. You just, you brought up discussion.
I thought we, okay.
You were, you brought up discussion. All right, any further discussion?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I did. That was right in the midstream of that.
Motion by Mr., Mrs. Smith, second by Mr. McCulister. Okay. Further discussion?
Congratulations.
Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those abstaining. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And note that Mr. Kreider has joined the table and the voting designation. So, I'll call case 18-7, call a vote. Close, Patel?
Patel.
Patel, okay. Thank you. You want to join us? I was guessing Patel or Faltow, one of the two?
Well, actually, I don't even, he says it right, I don't. I don't know the name.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
It wasn't a requirement to get married, you could go to your name.
All right. Chris says it right.
There you go.
Thank you for the assistance on that. Okay, we had a chance to take a look at this last time, and why don't we go through it? We have a minimal impact. I entertain a motion for completeness.
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCaffrey, second by Ms. B. Smith. Discussion on completeness.
There was some discussion last time about maybe some minor edits to the drawing.
Parking number was what the NG was? Was it Northwood Garage?
I don't think there was anything substantial, but I thought we suggested some changes on that.
We have, oh, yes, there are multiple copies of this, sorry.
Oh, we have copies of the plan.
I didn't know it was the Natural Glow and Northwood Garage.
So, as far as completeness goes, it looks like from staff notes, most of the issues have been addressed and added that with the new plan set. Again, just me speaking, not for the board. And we have a motion on the table for, to find it complete. Do we need more time to take a look, or are we ready to open it up? I got a head nod from at least two, so. All those in favor of finding case 18-7 complete, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining. So, we accepted the application as complete. That starts the legal clock. We have 65 days to make a decision if that, we need to take that long, based on the information you supply. One or two things happens at the end of that 65 days. Either we make a decision based on what you've done, or you can ask for an extension. I wouldn't worry too much about running the clock out. But I like to explain that's why we do it. Okay, why don't you introduce yourselves and tell us briefly what you want to do?
I'm Paula Fattill, and I currently own Natural Glow. We started as a spray tanning company, and now I am currently getting ready to finish school for nails. So, in that 700 square foot, we're looking to put two manicure stations and two pedicure stations. Nail, basically a nail spa. We plan to use cruelty-free and the healthiest products that we can find. We're going to do things like waxing, makeup, nails, spray tanning, just no hair. I think it's complicated. So, yeah.
Questions from the board?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Looks pretty-
I would observe the parking spaces, from what I understand, I may, I guess there's a potential to grow a little bit. Another chair, for instance, or something like that.
I mean, if we could be so lucky.
Yeah, but you have space for, I mean, you're saying, you know, two chairs, that translates, for me, anyway, I don't know a lot, took my nails too often.
He'll be your first customer.
Yeah, you need a light buff and clear coat on those, Joe. Yeah, I need a lot on those.
Oh, you said two pedicure chairs and two manicure chairs and spray tan, so.
But they must be booked all at the same time.
No, but I mean, that's-
Two at a time, takes about an hour, an hour and a half.
So, that's four people, maybe?
There's only two employees.
Two people?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you have-
Seven is only one employee.
And then you have the employees, another two, let's say, or so. Anyway, there's-
Might get a bridal party, though, you know?
Time to finish the draw.
There is additional parking on the back. Oh, there's plenty, yeah.
Yeah, but there's plenty of parking for what's proposed. There's a couple up front, and there's about 10, I guess, on the other side.
So, as far as, yeah, this is a mixed-use site, there are multiple users, and, you know, mixed-use sites tend to be able to, to work back and forth in terms of if there's overflow in one, there's usually not a fully parked-out section for one of the other businesses, so there's usually room for some back and forth. As far as actual parking standards go, we don't have anything in our code that's a nice, neat fit for a nail salon. The closest uses that I would say would either be to apply the retail parking standards, in which case this would need to have the same four spaces that the previous use had, or alternatively, to think about this as an accessory use on the site, since there are other uses as well. The standard for that is just a number of parking spaces that's acceptable to the board. So, as far as meeting the letter of the code goes, staff doesn't have any particular concerns.
Yeah, I think there's, as I-
Plenty of parking.
This is plenty of parking, I think.
Yeah.
As I was just puzzling over, this is, I mean, common sense dictates what the requirement is, I guess, and as I say, there's probably double or more.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what you need, so it's in plenty good shape.
I think the only real question that James brought up would be if there are, because it's mixed-use, if there are, let's say, long-term storage of vehicles from other businesses on that site in your spots, you might have some problems, but if you're, even if we use the retail use and it's only required for four spaces, that's pretty simple, pretty easy to meet.
Yeah.
So, but, I mean, speaking just for myself, I'm not concerned at all for parking. Do we have, oh, there's the butters list, okay, and?
The other thing, maybe I'll bring up as a, just a comment aside, we, this has been considered for other uses in the past, which the board has considered, but in this case, I think because this is a very low-volume business as far as people, it has virtually no impact, I would say, on the traffic going by. That was, that was, that's been occasionally an issue, we've had it in a few instances, and this, I would say, has virtually no effect.
Especially with, with two, two and two chairs?
Yeah, but they have to be booked, you know, if there's only two of us, so they-
Yeah, it's, not being a partaker of a nail salon, I would guesstimate, correctly fill me in, half an hour, 45 minutes, an hour, something like that? Not like the coffee shop where you're in and out in two minutes, you're also in a hurry.
It's a spa service, so you'll be sitting and taking a moment.
Relaxing.
Yeah.
Something I don't do.
My bad.
Don't tell me yet.
You're going to be a toesie, you can't wait.
Make it visible, put cucumbers on your eyes and everything.
Yeah.
You'll love it.
Shows. Okay.
The other thing, the septic that came up, I mean, and according to the certifications that we have here, this is, will have minimal loading on the over-adequate septic system that appears here. I was just looking at the figures for the total water usage of this site, and there's several other businesses here which use a lot more water than you do, I guess, certainly, but they don't even come close to using, or are maxing out the septic system, so. If you look at the watering and water out, it's, septic system is, I say, overdesigned or, at least it's ready for a lot more use.
Two questions as far as hours go. Two questions as far as hours go. And I, if town staff didn't tell you this, our recommendation is to request, if there's questions about, you want to open later or longer, request more than you actually are open. So, for instance, if you want to open at 10 o'clock, but there is a possibility of opening earlier, request earlier. These are what you'll be, would be held to, and if there is, for instance, a complaint of the neighbors, or something saying, she opened early on a Sunday morning at 9:00, and, you know, your hours there operational on your plan are 10.
Can I bump that to 10?
You can certainly modify them if you would like.
Okay.
That is our general recommendation is.
Change them?
Change them if you want. Make them either expand them beyond what you think you'll actually be.
Now, rather than later.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I appreciate, I will do that if I can.
And that's easily done, and now's the time to do it, that will solve some problems, and then as far as disposing of your own waste, is there, that's what you're being held to, is there a common dumpster or something, or are you having your own?
My lease just says to take my own trash, so we just, at the end of every day, take it with our home.
More curious than anything else, if.
I'm not, to be honest, I'm not unless.
If you're gonna have a dumpster, it would be something that we'd like to see on the plan, but doesn't sound like you will, and you'll need to. Anything else from the board?
Well, do we want to give her an opportunity to adjust her hours now before we do anything?
Yes.
I was just adding it back in as a condition of approval. And if she wants to think about it.
If she wants to say now, we can just change our favor, right?
I can hear that, too. I mean, if you, if you have an idea.
Let's just say 8 to 9 on all those days, just to cover all the bases.
I'd go seven days.
Yeah, let's do, yeah. Yeah. 8 to 9, seven days.
We've got to get it in there really early in the morning. Well, I mean, what if she wants to do something on a Monday? And then she's restricted. You're gonna get your nails done early, is that what? I like to do it early in the week.
8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
That was a early bird.
Seven days.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify that this, for the record, that this is an amendment to the existing site plan on file for this property?
Exactly.
Doesn't supersede, it adds to it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, not that you would be.
Does he understand?
They would not be incorrect, but yes, there is an overall site plan for this, this is.
Amending that portion of it.
Yeah. Just that portion. I'm changing subjects a little bit, so the waste disposal, do we need to say that specifically, or is that?
It's on there.
It's on.
We'll dispose of my own waste.
Okay, so now.
It's on there, and we weren't even particularly concerned about having it on the site plan, it's just when I saw it on the site plan, I wanted to clarify what that meant.
Okay, but I guess to Bob's comment
about
the waste, there's not gonna be an external dumpster or anything. Whatever is generated within the facility, you're taking with you, you're not putting it outside the facility.
Well, my intent was, by asking that, was that Natural Glow would not have their own dumpster. They might, as part of their lease arrangement, be able to use, if there was a dumpster on site that was available for all the occupants, they could do that. And that's what I was curious about, but because you don't have your own dumpster, you will need to see it.
Got it, okay.
If they did have access to one on the whole building, it still wouldn't need to be seen.
There probably won't be very much trash, either.
Yeah, no.
And everything gets double-bagged.
Yeah. Okay, just had to check that. Yep. Do we get a letter from DOT? Do we need a letter from DOT?
Staff hasn't received any from yet.
I'm just wondering if, what the board's opinion is, if you read number, James's comment, number five, the site has been and continues to be occupied by a variety of uses, including retail, restaurants, hair care, and auto repair.
I think, as a staff member, I don't have a concern about this going from retail to a nail salon, but that driveway also isn't our jurisdiction.
That's.
It's DOT's purview. They may say, yeah, this is retail to service, it's your standard commercial to commercial, and we don't care. But I think that's for them to say, I think that's sort of outside of our purview.
Okay.
For who to say?
For DOT.
For DOT to essentially say, yeah, it's not an issue.
Since the driveway is their jurisdiction.
Does it, does it just be an email from?
I've been, yeah, I'm in the process.
That's not surprising, I can't imagine that they would have an issue.
I mean, there is the chance that they would require a new permit application and to go through all of that, but there's not really anything that we can do about that as of time.
Exactly. It'd be better to ask beforehand than to plead ignorance on our end. Generally, what they're responding with in, I think they.
It varies for a while, last year they were really backed up, it seemed like things were going faster lately.
I think typically will say that, not in expectation, but just so you're aware of it, that they'll give you like a preview, saying, it doesn't look like there's any problems, and we expect issuance of an email or a letter within such a period of time.
But that wouldn't impede their going ahead with this, would it? It's a condition. I mean, if it's gonna hang out for months.
It is a requirement.
We typically have required.
Everybody else.
That written confirmation prior to assigning the plans.
Just wondering if we might be able to relax that a little bit by the receipt of the email from DOT saying we expect a signature or acceptance.
What we typically understand, the written confirmation.
Okay, the.
To include.
Yeah, we don't.
It can be a letter on letterhead, it can be an email from somebody, as long as it's either saying, we don't require a permit for this change, or we intend to issue a permit. We would consider that to be written confirmation.
Here's the intention part.
Okay.
There can be a delay between the, we don't see any problems and we intend to issue one, and when they actually get around to issuing it. And I don't want you to get stuck behind that.
I would want to clarify, though, that they generally want to go out and look at the site. They may say, we intend to, and the permit number may come, and the actual permit much later, but I think they generally do want to go out and look at the site.
Just.
That's my understanding from the emails I've received and the discussions I've had with them.
That's where there's some significant change, isn't it?
That's up to them, and it has to do with location as well.
And I think that for full disclosure, for the applicant, there is currently a driveway permit request for the site across the street that DOT has been looking at for several months at this point. That's for a much more substantial change in use, they're putting in addition onto that building, they're actually changing the driveway configuration, but I couldn't say with any confidence that DOT wouldn't take that into account in terms of wanting to see this. On the flip side, they may already be very familiar with this stretch of road and issue it immediately because they were just out there last week. We have no idea.
What, just as an aside, well, related to, but not impacting this case, I would love to see if we could converse with DOT to see if we could get some guidance from them on maybe numbers or something as far as uses, so that we or the applicants don't have, each time that there's a change of use for this case, don't have to go back to them all the time, but I don't know.
I mean, we already reached out, this was probably last year, but I reached out to District 6 to confirm that the process they wanted to follow is that every time there is a change in use, they want a notification, and they wanted the opportunity to provide written comments, and they confirmed, yes.
Okay.
The procedure we would like to follow.
Okay, fine, just curious.
And they've indicated the same to me as well.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Job security.
But, you know, by your own note here, James, the reflection is, I mean, as you go through the list, including retail, restaurants, hair care, and auto repair hair care is almost identical to this use, I don't know if this therefore is really a change of use even, in terms of even speaking about it. It's consistent with what, it's even lower usage than what was there on some instances. And hair care is equivalent, what I would observe.
But it wasn't hair care there before.
What?
It wasn't.
It was not hair.
It was a video store years and years ago.
It was a video store.
There's hair care on site in the other building.
You're referring to that, okay.
This building.
Okay.
But yeah, I agree, I saw that, and I was.
I mean, but, okay, so it's, yeah, so you weren't referring to what was there in that location, the.
It's part of the driveway. All of its uses are accessed by that same driveway, just not within this.
I know, I'm observing here from a practical, common sense standpoint, that we're talking about a miniscule increase in activity. I'm hoping that DOT doesn't have any, doesn't spend more than five seconds of job time on consideration.
Mr. Chairman, may we possibly white out that four parking spaces, so it's not in conflict with the actual parking spaces, or?
I think that would be fine, I had thought of that earlier, no reason why you can't do that. Pardon me?
What is that we're asking?
Oh, it's just a conflict between the prior plan that says four parking spaces, but you could have more than that now.
Natural Glow is written in the, on the plan, four parking spaces assigned to it.
They're talking about the text here.
Have, as far as the, on the backside of your notes, the conditions of approval have, it looks like.
So, it said that everything that is written there as an update to the site plan has been completed.
Okay, A, B, and C.
If you really want to add, white out the indication of four parking spaces as a condition of approval, we can, or we can make sure that on whoever's copy gets into the file as the official copy, that we white it out before you sign it.
I think we can change the hours of operation as well.
Yeah, they were all changing the planning as well.
And I think on the board's plans, we can just black it out. Instead of waiting out.
Yeah, what were the hours of operation that we decided to change it to?
Nine, both, for all days.
8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days per week.
No, they're closed Monday.
I wish you were looking at it different.
They're just gonna change it, Monday through Sunday.
That's why I couldn't find.
9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Eight to nine.
8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Sorry, it's been a long day. They're gonna be walk-ins, or is it gonna be by appointment?
We're gonna start by appointment only.
Yeah, see how it goes.
Yep.
Imagine that there would be any, based on the site and the neighborhood and business neighbors, and even the residential in there, there shouldn't be any, nobody should have any problems with that hours-wise. 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on a Sunday is a little odd, but if you are right next to the house, or somebody's house, it might cause some questions about where you are. Nobody's gonna notice.
People are there for breakfast and everything in the morning across the street.
You might get some clientele who.
With those changes, the only condition of approval we would have would be prior to assigning the plans, we would need the confirmation from DOT.
Okay.
Motion to approve the application with conditions as stated by Ms. B.
Second.
Motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. Kreider.
May I just ask one final question, please?
Sure.
Were the butters checked against our current assessing, they didn't just come from the old plan, did they? They were checked against that, thank you very much.
Wow, I see what you're saying, yeah.
I never read the butters list either.
Oh.
Oh.
Take that motion off the table, please.
They didn't give him a chance to speak either.
God. At least I remembered before we approved it. Okay. You'll have to withdraw the motion.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay.
If that makes you feel more comfortable.
Okay. For case 18-07, if you are in a butter and I read your name, please both raise your hand and speak so that I know you're here. Robert Paquette. Elliott Revocable Living Trust. I'm assuming this is Patrick Germain. Joan Jenna. Cooper Hill Property Rentals. Jim Plunkett Real Estate.
You missed.
Burnier Joint Revocable.
Yes, that's where I was going, it's not on the list, Burnier Joint Revocable Trust. Okay, hearing, oh, I recognize the member of the public here. Okay, hearing none. I'll open the public hearing at this point in time to any butter, a member of the public who would like to speak on this application. All eyes toward Mr. Gary, if you would like to. You don't have to. I'll close the public hearing at this point in time.
Motion to approve, motion to accept the application with conditions as stated by Mr. Burden.
Approve the application with the conditions as stated.
Approve the application.
We accepted it already.
Second, I'll second it again.
Okay. Restate that, motion by Ms. B. Smith, second by Mr. Kreider. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, as abstaining. Okay. Good to go. Once you get that letter for confirmation from DOT. Town staff can help you with that, too.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll be there. We have, really.
I wanted to make sure this sounded okay first.
And I'll make sure that we white out the four things on that copy that I signed.
We're gonna treat those as the official copies.
It'll work, too. Okay. Do you have more business?
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to know where I could find out the requirements that the road is supposed to be before I obtain services of a licensed civil agent.
Probably the road.
So, we've got them included in the 67441 application, so I can just give you this, you don't have to do the whole application, but I can point you to exactly where those standards are in the application. And you can just take this with you.
Am I required to fill this, this whole application?
Nope.
Oh?
Well.
Not this one, because he doesn't need 67441.
He's just looking for the requirements. He's just looking for the requirements.
Need to get permission from the board.
Do you have an application?
I was thinking the same thing.
It'd be a blanket.
Maybe we can get the selectmen to adjust the.
Gary likes it cold.
He's turning his face.
If he's filling out a building from there.
Where'd the cold air come from?
What I wanted to do is.
Gary.
Freeze my license.
I've got my shirt stretched over my knees.
Do it by jacket.
Gary, don't worry about it. The guidelines are in there. I'm comfortable.
Population projections are not, gonna be going, uh.
I think, you know, your fan is gonna.
Anywhere, anytime soon.
But, but everything's right in there.
All right. It's your floor.
It's supposed to be really warm though, the next couple days, like in the nineties.
No.
No, so you could just have an engineer take a look.
That one anyway.
Um, and if he can submit something showing that it meets the standards, and you don't have to make any improvements, then you wouldn't need to worry about any other comments.
Do I have a fixer stamp, and who does he give the?
He would bring it into the land use department.
Land use?
Right here.
Do you have a business?
This young lady, I'll give you a business.
Yeah, exactly.
He can take that with him.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry to make you wait. Okay, that takes care of cases tonight, we can get on to my two favorite subjects. Master plan and the CIP.
Let's start with master plan.
Okay.
Um, excuse me, included in the paper clipped packet of things I left for all of you is a section on population and demographics. Um, I think this is going to be a relatively quick and easy one. Um, the, so I've updated information for some of these sections, um, I put a new graph and table, uh, showing population growth under the population itself, I pulled new data showing the age breakdown of Northwood. Um, I haven't corrected the other tables that were in here that I think could maybe use a little bit of work, um, just because I'm a little confused as to why, for example, we're comparing nineteen ninety-nine to twenty fifteen, there seem like very weird, uh, dates to choose. Um, but one thing I wanted to check, so I would propose that I can go back, uh, and have that data ready to go when we sit down and talk through this.
Yeah.
At the workshop, um, yeah, I'm proposing to follow the same process we did last month, take this home with you, think it over, think if there are things that are missing, um, and then we can talk about it next month. Uh, one question that I would have, because different tables in the master plan have treated this differently, for things where you want to provide a little bit more context for Northwood's data, what do you want to compare Northwood to? I have seen tables that do every municipality that you touch, I have seen tables that do every municipality that you touch and every county that you touch, I have seen some that are just Northwood, Rockingham County, and the state of New Hampshire, um, I have seen some that are an unclear blend of all of those. Um, so I think for, uh, things that we do when we're doing the Stratford region, we'll typically just do county and state, uh, so for a municipality, we'd probably equate that with Northwood, Rockingham County, and the state of New Hampshire, or if you really feel strongly about having, uh, neighboring communities, so you can get a community to community comparison, um, we could do Northwood and any, any of the budding communities if you wanted.
Well, James, I, uh, I think some of it depends on what data's available, uh, 'cause I, I sort of remember when I was talking to Drew about some of this.
If we're using state and national data sets.
Yeah.
Um, local municipalities, i- if we can get it for Northwood, we can probably get it for everybody else, unless we're doing things out of Northwood's assessing database.
Yeah.
Um, I was kind of surprised about how good, how, I don't know how good is the right way to describe it, but how much data is actually available for towns in New Hampshire, um, and that is a reflection of the New England town as a sort of in, unique entity, um, whereas in other states, uh, communities can incorporate out of townships, uh, but here we have everything incorporated with municipal government, um, so that would mean that some data, for example, from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, that we normally would not have for a town this size, should exist.
Well, I, I remember reading and, and maybe in part working on this a little bit year or year and a half ago, and I know that, uh, you know, most cases, we thought population, stuff like that, was just as you said, Northwood, Rockingham County, and New Hampshire State, pretty sufficient, uh, but I think there was, you know, at that point in time anyway, a lot of discussion about how we compared to other towns surrounding us when it came to income, and therefore the ability to support taxes, the ability to pay for different things, and stuff like that, and I think that's the reason why the, the one table includes so many different towns.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think Rockingham County is just so big, and it's just like.
It isn't normal enough.
Because like, all the seacoast would be there, and obviously there.
We're like the forgotten cousin of Rockingham County.
It would, yeah, exactly. I think it would just skew everything.
So maybe that's part of the guideline then, where we don't think the data would be skewed by including the county or the state, maybe that's a good way to do it. And I have to say, you know, like, on the education, I would have loved to see some comparisons to the county and state on that, uh, but that might make.
That's another one that I'm proposing to pull that data for next time, I just don't get it done for this time, so it's part of what I wanted to gauge, what you wanted me to pull that for, so education.
If you can do age too, because I think it'd be good for us to know, are we aging or creeping up on that, you know, increase in population faster than others, 'cause maybe we need to think about acting sooner.
You mean the Silver Tsunami?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think we initially discussed in a, a section on age, an entire section on age in the Silver Tsunami, how it would impact and what the recommendations would be for land use and services and stuff to that effect. Um, there is a good bit of data on it, the, and I don't necessarily want to lose that, but I don't necessarily want to include it in population. I would see that as more recommendations later on.
That's more recommendations, but if we, but I think to, to your point though, Bob, if we want to talk about it more, then we probably need to have more data.
Oh yeah, definitely.
So there too, I, again, I don't know what's all available and how hard the chart would be to make, but it might be interesting to see.
But that'd be a great data hustle for the, uh, direct department to maybe start offering more adult things versus just children sponsored events.
Yeah, so, but I, I just have to say, I do remember being somewhat constrained sometimes when we were looking at the data, or we couldn't get good data, or maybe in some cases it was extrapolated data, which, you know, if it's county data extrapolated to us, it really doesn't help us. So be careful.
Projections would be extrapolated, um, if you were doing, uh, using American Community Survey data that is a, a sample, um, so you would have margins of error on that. Uh, the two data sources that I pulled for the age breakdown and for the historic population are just decennial census, so that means that that is, I need to fix that population growth table too. Um, the, that's decennial census, so that is a count of everybody. Um, the projected population for a town of Northwood size, you're, you're not really gonna be able to project that super accurately for, so for those, they normally project for the county and then, uh, it's sorted out by share of county population.
I'm going back to the age thing, is, is there anything that could get us a sort of intermediate point, 'cause going from two thousand to two thousand and ten, we're almost at the end where you'd expect a chart for two thousand and twenty, and I realize you don't obviously have the two thousand.
We can look, if, if you would want to look at, uh, growth over time, we can look at the American Community Survey, um, acknowledging that we would be dealing with some margins of error there. Um, if we were doing that as a trend, I would probably pull like the last five years, um, two thousand and sixteen being the most recent ACS data that's available.
Okay.
Uh, and that's something that we've done in other communities. Um, my main concern with how some of these charts had been done, and tables had been done previously, was that some of them compared decennial census data to American Community Survey data, and I would not want to have both of those sources in the same table.
Yeah, okay, well, I think maybe we have to let you do some work and use your judgment, but like, for instance, on the age breakdown, if we could either get the two thousand and twenty projection, or at least some real data for two thousand and fifteen or sixteen.
I think that was the, the ACS.
Yeah.
Projection, I would personally love to see that, the, the last, you know, if it's two thousand and sixteen, and the last, do the last five years and do the, show the trend.
Yeah, that'd be terrific.
That would be good, um, and maybe bracket that with the two thousand and ten and two thousand, uh, I'm assuming that's the decennial, or the, um, census data.
Yes, that's a good call, I need to level that.
Yes, and you said you're gonna correct the population growth, ones I'm making.
Yeah, I think I got halfway through working on that section, and then got pulled onto something else this week, and then when I came back, I assumed I was done with it and went straight to the age breakdown.
Right, which is, I, 'cause I, listen, I don't think we doubled the state of, or our population, state between.
No, that, and I would not do that as a percentage of the nineteen seventy, that's a weird table to me, that table will be changing substantially if I.
What I.
Do an equivalent.
What I would find helpful would be either a sliding scale.
Yeah.
To say, year to year, you know, in, in, or decade to get decade, from nineteen seventy numbers, we grew ten percent.
Right.
From nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety, we grew another ten percent, or whatever the number is, uh, twenty-five percent, uh, at that point in time, or go exactly.
So you would want, in each decade, you would want percent growth from the prior decade?
Depends on what the board wants, what's.
Um, I think the easiest, and probably what I would suggest would be, uh, maybe showing the populations for each one by, uh, decade, and then at the end, having a percent growth, showing the trend from start to finish in the table.
That would, that would.
So we could do percent growth from nineteen seventy to twenty-ten, for Northwood, for Rockingham County, and for the state of New Hampshire.
Okay.
I think we'll know what we like when we see it.
Okay. Keep trying.
There you go.
Well, just to make an observation on that last, an aggregate percentage, I don't think is too useful, it's a number, but.
Yeah.
Kind of what, in some form you're indicating, I hear you're using a line graph, I guess if we're talking historic and projected, um, uh, and I also like the idea of occasionally changing the, uh, graph style or technique, just for interest, uh, but in other words, if you had all line graphs after a while, I think that just, first of all, line graphs, well, they have their own problems, but, but bar graphs, or, actually, you don't have a bar graph here per se, but that, if that was a bar graph, just to use as an example, there's others that could work, uh, you see visually right away a shift in, in, in growth or change, and you, and when you throw color into each bar so that it distinguishes itself, that is, you see, you know, you see steps, and then the steps are getting smaller, as in this case would be, I think, and I'm not saying that's the best choice right now, but I'm just using that as an alternative example, and that right away translates for somebody quickly looking at it, that there's a change, whatever that trend is. Um, I think that those visuals, I, I like graphs of some kind, uh, rather than lots of numbers, because they're, they're lost, and people don't, I don't think people read numbers in great quantities, unless they're unusual fans of, uh, that, but, but visual is very.
Certainly something like table four would probably be a little bit overwhelming for people, for your average user.
Table four?
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of communities with a lot of numbers, and they start to lose meaning.
That is, the only thing about that is, um, I don't know, I mean, if you, if you've got a technique there, in that case, 'cause those are our surrounding communities, and I think we do need to represent that somehow or show it, I think it's good to know what's happening right around us, and that, that is, those are the communities that surround us, so I don't know how you, I, I.
I think we could probably find a way to be more selective, for example, I don't really like using per capita income as a measure in general.
You mentioned the distinction.
Um, that I, I think too much can get skewed by household size on that, I'm not super thrilled with median household income either, but if you're looking at trends over time, that's a good number to use, um, so I'm thinking I may balance this, uh, and do something showing median household income over time, and maybe that's what we can compare to other communities with, um, some sort of a breakdown of what general income brackets Northwood residents fall into, um, where instead of just looking at a median number, how many households earn less than twenty-five thousand dollars a year, how many are in between twenty-five and fifty, um, that's something that we've done at the regional level.
So simplifying that group of numbers, partly by getting rid of per capita.
Mm-hmm, yeah, if we did per capita income, that would get rid of two columns right there, um, if we picked a couple consistent years, uh, for the median household income then, and maybe we still do three or four or five years of comparison, but it, it's just sort of, I think that's gonna be a little bit cleaner, rather than going back and forth, median income to per capita to median to per capita, um, and we can show that growth over time, and then put a percentage figure on that.
I would agree, that block of numbers is, is a little much.
Uh, and there might be some formatting things with the table that I can do too, to sort of break it up and make it easier to look at, um, so you can do some things in a glance.
But I think you're right, median household, or let me say this, household income is really the economic unit, per capita isn't, so getting rid of the per capita doesn't really make sense, households make the budgeting decisions. Households make the budgeting decisions and stuff, not a cap. Okay.
And then CIP, I don't think I have anything to update. I think when we, I sent you all the list that we talked through last week, your last meeting, about the process that we're going to be following for updating that. We did mention that we're planning to do the update with the board as a whole, so that everybody can experience the fun of capital improvements planning. The request has been sent out to all departments, and it was in the minutes of the last meeting to get updates on those projects, or really, we're just waiting to get the information back. I believe the deadline we set for that was July 9th. Is that right? So there's not anything to do right now. And is that just before the next workshop? Yeah, so we can, we may be able to give you all a brief update on what we've received, but staff's probably going to need a little bit of time to compile and organize things, and we should expect to actually dig in at the second meeting in July.
Okay. Sounds good.
That'll be an interesting meeting.
Are you out of things to do or say?
No, not quite. But it shouldn't take very long. I'll try to get us out before nine. That gives me eight minutes.
Ready, go.
Yeah. Don't start that, teacher. I get that bad enough at school. I had a question, and this has been brought up in discussion before, I just don't remember where who left.
Is that what you were?
Yes, what Dale emailed.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I was going to bring up.
Yeah, what I did was, I took the checklist.
Okay.
And I came up with a reduced amount of information as a starting point.
Okay. So this is the 674. Essentially, chime in, essentially, do you want to...
I can give a quick overview.
Any more?
Sure. We'll share.
That's okay, I can share.
We want to slide this right off.
Okay, don't worry about it.
Okay, basically, the building inspector had asked, I guess it was some discussion with Bob, and I've had some discussion with him about it, is that we had, there's two issues. One is, for the 674 process, the planning board does review and comment for two different areas. One is accessory structures, and that does not go to the board of selectmen. And then there's all the ones that have any changes in the living space, new developments, all that, will go to the selectmen. So we're specifically asking, or talking about tonight, the accessory structure applications, which do not go to the board of selectmen. They come from the building department to the planning board, because under that statute, it's required that you give review and comment before he can issue the building permit. So the one issue is relative to, he had asked, do you want to, like, pre-approve certain situations that before you even get them, you say to him, we're okay with those, don't even give them to us? And also then, the second half of it is, what, we want to have just a checklist for just accessory structures, and what you would be wanting to look for, for those that do come to you. What information? So I guess the first question is, do you want to exempt, before you even see them, let's say, I'll give an example, all decks or sheds under 100 square feet, open decks or sheds.
100 square feet.
100?
Uh, that way, he could expedite those and just do building permits.
There's no building permit required for a shed underneath, shed under, or an accessory structure under a square, 100 square feet?
Not in the building department. There, it's exempt from site plan, but it's not exempt from a building permit. You're thinking, you're thinking planning board, Bob.
I am thinking planning board. I can't imagine why I'm thinking planning board.
We exempted anything that was under, I think it was a little bit bigger, it was like 150 square feet, from building permit.
We're not, we're not stopping him from doing anything with it, it's just we don't have to see it.
From my perspective, just, just speaking for myself, if there's no change in exterior footprint, I don't necessarily want to see it. If the accessory structure is less than, let me pick a number for argument, 200 square feet, and not situated within a setback, within, not within 20 or feet of the property edge, I don't necessarily want to see it. If it's a deck, I don't really care.
Okay, so just...
So essentially, if it's a barn, or a garage, or a studio, that's 200 square feet or more, that could eventually be used as a sometime, seasonal or sometime residence. Or it is of a, like a barn, where you're looking at a view, or changing a significant portion of the view of a neighbor, then I'd probably want to see it.
Well, let me just pull it back, just, because now you're thinking of, like, zoning ordinance. But this is relative to access only.
Yeah.
The only time, I was thinking about this earlier, in, like, a garage, for example, you could say, well, what's the big deal about a garage? All of these are accessory structures. But what can be a problem is, based solely on access, you could have a house with seven different folks living in there, and then they want to put up an eight bay garage, and then you're going to generate all additional traffic for all those cars that would go in that garage, potentially.
Oh.
So, I mean, maybe they're already driving in and out, but it's really about access for this.
Look at the, we've had a couple applications before on some of the roads around the lakes, where somebody puts in a two or three car garage, and it's, the lots are small.
Mm-hmm.
The drive, the garage door is right on the edge of the property, so you are backing into the road to get into your garage, or something to that effect, which is not quite as bad as trying to back onto Route 4, but close enough. And that's where, that's where I would like to see this kind of stuff. But how do you quantify that?
One of the concerns is, is that by pre approving stuff, then you don't ever see it.
Right.
The option is, is keeping that bar low enough that you're comfortable with it, of whatever you may pre exempt. But on the other hand, the, the only real problem is time, because if you were to exempt none of them, the issue would be it'd be holding people up. You can always say, no comment, and then it goes right back to the building inspector, he can issue the permit. That, that was a comment that occurred not too long ago, because there was a road that went through, and they, it was a right of way went through the property.
Right.
And the other thing to remember is, accessory structures are allowed on non-conforming lots.
Correct.
Without a variance, as long as they meet the setbacks and any other requirements. They're exempt from lot size and road frontage. So...
What's the worst that happens?
You may want to give it some thought before you make a decision on that.
What's, what's the worst that happens? Somebody's delayed two weeks?
Well, that's another thing, is that the procedures call that, that they have to be here by the first of the month, just like a regular application. Now, that's something you could do, would be to say that you would take accessory structures at...
Every...
At every single, whenever, at the very next meeting, and just add it to your agenda, rather than making people wait the full month.
Well, how many of these are there, like, this, this summer so far? How many have come up?
I think just one, so far.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I think trying to spend a lot of time figuring out the exceptions and all that for one or two permits a year, or one or two permits in the quarter, I'd rather see us just, let's figure out a way to get them done quickly, and I mean, two weeks isn't that big a time. Why is the building inspector entering into, I'm trying to put this together, this is regarding our comment on activity on a Class 6 or private road. Right? Well, these, one of the subcategories here is, if property does not meet either the two above, and then it signs form from the building inspector that the application falls under his authority to grant the permit following review and comment from the planning board, as it meets the following, or accessory residential, I mean, inhabited structures, or the reconstruction or maintenance of residential structures. Why would the building inspector be involved in any maintenance going on to a residential structure in the first place? I mean, people replace windows, roofs, siding, any, name a thousand things. That's none of the building inspector's business.
It is a theft to pull permits for it.
No, not for maintenance.
Depends on what you consider maintenance.
What?
Depends on what's considered maintenance.
Well, it said, maintenance in this case, residential structure on existing lawfully permitted structure footprint, it does not increase the size or dimension. That's where the building inspector becomes possibly involved, increasing size of...
But if I, if I take out a single window and replace it with a double?
So what?
You need...
You've got to put a header in, you've got to get a building permit.
If you do electrical work, if you do plumbing work, you have to, that hasn't changed the footprint, and you need permits for it.
Well, that's not footprint.
In New Hampshire, there are exceptions for if you're doing the work yourself on property you own, but for the most part...
Yeah.
Yeah. The assumption is, those are things that can very easily require a building permit.
Well, only, well, in certain other jurisdictions, I mean, in certain, I mean, cities and whatnot, but there are other things that come into play, because their building codes impositions are much greater.
This state has set the minimum building code.
Yeah, I know.
That's not a community by community thing.
No, that's, no, that's, yes, it is. That's why I mentioned cities, because many of them impose additional requirements over the national...
Only one or two have taken an addition, a newer version of the international building code.
I'm just saying it exists, that's all I was saying. But I'm, the, but in this case...
You're struggling with the word maintenance. It's just broad, because there could, somebody could say, well, my roof is rotted, so I'm going to maintain my house by ripping off the rafters, replacing them all, and putting a new roof on, just so that it's understood that he definitely knows what he needs to issue permits for and what he doesn't, as far as if it's maintenance cosmetically, or someone could see it as maintaining the structure by putting new sills under it, which would require a building permit.
Yeah, I, I, okay.
But we're getting away from the point of it. We don't have to decide tonight, but he would definitely like to know what information you would like, and that's why I came up with that revised accessory. Alls I did was basically take out the parts on the second page that include having a New Hampshire engineer provide plans and all that. This is just the basic information that I think the board would be looking for.
This has happened to us numerous times here, where, I mean, none of this actually applies to us, our, our planning board passing judgment on any of this stuff, including the maintenance, as we're referring to. That's, as, you know, we've seen this, the real dilemma that's come up is with these boasted stamp lots around Harvey and other places, where we have virtually no comment on it anyway, outside of road access. So here we are, getting involved in whether we want to...
No, we're just clarifying which permits, that these are for these accessory residential, that there's a lower threshold of information that needs to be provided for these specific ones, that is not, the other checklist includes a whole, like, if, let's say these folks came in and they didn't have a subdivision plat, and they just had an existing lot of record that was on a private road, and they want to put a new house in. Then the selectmen's guidelines require that they have the New Hampshire licensed engineer confirm that the road meets the emergency standards, written road maintenance agreement, if there's more than one party. It's just another list that's longer than the, than this one. So we're trying to streamline the process for those who have smaller...
I'm in favor of that. I just think that this is already asking us some things here that we don't have any say about anyway.
Well, take a, take a look...
That's my observation, yeah.
Joe's comments aside, take a look at it over the next two weeks, and you can ask Dale if he has more specifics that he'd want. But see what you want with this. I'm all in favor, I would not want to see absolutely every 674 that comes in. But there are some that I would like to see. It's a matter of figuring out where that trigger point is.
Do you have any thoughts, Scotty?
Should we add that to the workshop?
Yeah, we'll add that to the workshop. And I realize I'm ten minutes over. This is Mr. Daco?
I don't know, but is it?
What's, 10, Ledwood Realty, Millstone Realty Trust?
That's my, that's my...
Yeah, map, 211, 217.
Oh.
1090, First New Hampshire Turnpike.
Oh, I think he might be working with Holden again to be.
Okay.
Did you have any comments about that excavation?
A portion of the project area is considered archaeologically sensitive.
Where's I supposed to reach out to now?
Is there something coming up?
I don't know, we can check.
I guess he's put in an application.
I almost called you earlier today to make sure there wasn't something else I was behind on.
You've been doing pretty fine keeping up, there's been a lot of news, and a lot of them.
Yeah.
If you want to put that in your online...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, did he have to do a state natural and historic resources form?
What's 10, where's 1090? First New Hampshire, where's 1090, First New Hampshire Turnpike?
That's him.
That is him, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
He may be getting ready to do, either looking at doing another project, or I don't...
Or moving further back or something?
The second detention fund, I don't think is done, is it?
I don't think it is either.
I don't think it's started.
Yeah. That might be impacting phase two or phase three.
Right.
What do you think?
We can look into that.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes, you're on. Good night. Can I?